Yes, yes. Some of them are awesome. And this is a very moralized decision.
Yeah. There you find it. Yes. Hey.
Oh, very nice. You know, you're not supposed to eat in here, guys. I think you're freaking out or something. I don't think they're like, there's a sign that says only water or something?
There he is.
Here he is. No, I'll move me over.
It's been four years, Laurie, really.
Good evening. This is the Village Council regular public meeting. The date is December 11th, 2024. The time is 7:38. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by a posting on the bulletin board in Village Hall, by mail to the Ridgewood News, The Record, and by submission to all persons entitled the same as provided by law of a schedule, including the date and time of this meeting. Roll call.
Deputy Mayor Perrin.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Here.
Councilmember Wundergrad.
Here.
Mayor Vagianos.
Here. Will you all please join us in a salute to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I move the bills, claims, and vouchers and statement of funds on hand as of November 30th, 2024 be accepted as submitted.
Second.
Perrin.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Wundergrad.
Yes.
Vagianos.
Yes. I move that the Village Council minutes of January 31st, September 25th, October 9th, October 23rd, November 6th, and November 13th, 2024, having been reviewed by the Village Council and now available in the Village Clerk's office, be approved as submitted.
Second.
Perrin.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes, except for October 23rd, when I was absent.
White.
Yes, except for the 6th, when I think I was absent as well.
Wundergrad.
Yes.
And Vagianos.
Yes.
Sorry, I made a mistake. I was not here for November 6th or 13th.
Okay.
And now we have a couple of proclamations. Siobhan?
Lorraine, I think we want to go down, too.
Okay.
Please go down.
Yeah.
Jack, come join us and your family.
I'm pleased to thank you so much for being here. Thank you.
Jack, we are so grateful for the work that you have done for the village. It's very important to us and the residents of this village are so fortunate to have you here to have performed all of the things that you've done for us. And so because of that, we're going to give you a proclamation to show our gratitude. I'm going to read this proclamation right now. Whereas Jack Tankos was born and raised in Ridgewood and is a proud alumnus of the Ridgewood Public Schools, and whereas Jack began his service as an EMT with Ridgewood Emergency Services and assisted at the site of the World Trade Center bombing in 1993 with a specially created unit which made communication between New Jersey and New York EMTs possible. And whereas in 1994, Jack started as a public safety telecommunicator when Northwest Bergen Central Dispatch was founded and was quickly recognized for his outstanding service and was awarded EMT of the Year in that same year. And whereas his tireless efforts and dedication to the emergency services field led to his rising to the rank of Captain of Emergency Services from 2000 to 2003. And whereas during his years of service, Jack provided invaluable assistance during crises such as 9/11, when he was stationed at the George Washington Bridge with the Ridgewood Mobile Communications Unit, as well as during Hurricanes Irene and Sandy, when he stayed for the duration at NWBCD and during Hurricane Floyd, when he helped to move the Police Department and EMS from Village Hall to the Peace Memorial Library. And whereas Jack played an important role in assisting the Director, Robert Greenlaw, with the creation of the NWBCD, as well as its achievement of Calea Public Safety Communications Accreditation, making it the first standalone agency in the United States to achieve such status. And whereas Jack was a pioneer with the Explorers Program, now known as TIES, which is actually Teens in Emergency Services, that enables high school students ages 14 to graduation to receive training such as CPR, AED, and First Aid, learn specialized emergency equipment, gain communication and leadership skills, and develop professional connections with other members who have various careers in and out of public safety. And whereas Jack's leadership was instrumental in the considerable growth of the NWBCD over the years beyond just Ridgewood and Glen Rock to eventually encompass the municipalities of Franklin Lakes, Montvale, New Milford, Oakland, Old Tapan, Oriddell, Park Ridge, River Edge, River Vale, Rutherford, Waldwick, Washington Township, and Wood Cliff Lake. And whereas in 2014, Jack was recognized as Ridgewood Emergency Services Citizen of the Year for his dedication and passion for aiding those in need through emergency services. And whereas over the last 30 years, Jack has served the NWBCD in several capacities, starting as a dispatcher and serving as Director from 2009 to 2014 and as Deputy Director since 2017, responsible for budgeting and logistics. And whereas Jack's attention to detail, dedication, and unrivaled experience have benefited the NWBCD, our first responders, and the public. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Village Council of the Village of Ridgewood does hereby express its profound gratitude to and appreciation for Jack for all that he has done and for all that he continues to do for our community, and does hereby thank Jack on behalf of all Village of Ridgewood residents for his 30 years of invaluable services on behalf of a grateful community. Jack, thank you so much. Would you be kind enough to say a few words?
Not my forte. I'll keep it brief because that makes me feel really old and has taken up a good amount of time. What we do is an incredible, incredible responsibility. Folks in the very worst moments of their lives will rely on the people that I work with and that I've worked with over the years to be there to answer the phone. In some respects, it can be more stressful than being on the street because we don't get closure. It's difficult to see somebody in crisis, but to talk them through a crisis over the phone has its own unique challenges. So as much as it can be an incredible, not burden, but challenge and responsibility, it's also a tremendous honor. And that's, I think, what has guided me through even the minutia of the budgeting and the nonsense that we do day to day to keep the lights on. What really needs to be caught in the moment, I think, is the value of the folks that answer those phones day in and day out, which I haven't done for a number of years now. But folks continue to come to this profession, whether it be for this profession itself or to move on to other professions like law enforcement and career fire service. Their value really can't be measured and is often forgotten. Cookies and trimmings and whatnot get sent down to the police department after a child's been born. Folks at the fire department and the ambulance service will get recognition. And the dispatchers are the folks that are behind the scenes, and we're okay with being behind the scenes. But it's really a tremendous honor to be recognized, not only for my time in the service, for the service itself to be recognized. And that's touching to me. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Thank you for loaning him to our community. Please let all the council members thank you. And I know we have the proclamation in the other room. It's already been signed. Thank you so much. Oh, yes, let's get a picture. And we have another proclamation for Radon Action Month that Councilmember Lorraine Reynolds will read.
Actually, I will.
You guys are killing me today.
Whereas radon is a naturally occurring radioactive gas that is the second leading cause of lung cancer, and whereas prolonged exposure to radon can kill as many as 500 people in New Jersey each year, and whereas families who reside in homes with elevated radon levels are at risk of developing serious health problems, and whereas any home could have high levels even when neighboring homes do not, and whereas radon testing can be done with great ease at a relatively low expense to the homeowner, with the cost of reducing radon concentrations being comparable to a home repair, and whereas the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection and the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency are collaborating during the month of January to promote the need for radon testing in an effort to protect the lives of our state's citizens. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Village Council of the Village of Ridgewood does hereby proclaim the month of January 2025 as Radon Action Month in the Village of Ridgewood, and calls upon all residents who have not yet tested to test their homes for radon and to reduce radon levels if elevated levels are found in order to protect their families from serious health risk of radon.
Thank you, Pam. And now we will go to comments from the public.
Good evening, everyone. Nancy Brennan Hill, 136 Terima Avenue, Ridgewood. I came here for one thing tonight, to thank Lorraine for all that she's done for the Village of Ridgewood. I'm particularly grateful for all the flower activity that she has supported. If you could see the diagrams that she has and the detail for each and every flower pot in Ridgewood, what flower goes in and in what position it goes in, you'd be afraid to do it for fear you'd do it wrong. But nevertheless, it happens every year, and I'm hoping, Lorraine, that you'll somehow continue doing that because I would miss you heartily. Goodbye.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you, Nancy.
Good evening. Ann Loving, Ridgewood resident. The first couple of comments I'm going to make are on behalf of Dana Glazer, another Ridgewood resident. Councilwoman Reynolds, my apologies for not being here in person to share this with you this evening, but on behalf of my family, myself, and so many others in town, you deserve a mighty heartfelt thanks for all of your years of service to our village. Ridgewood is a better place because of your steadfast leadership, determination, and many kindnesses. You are a treasure, and I am very grateful for all that you have done. Sincerely, Dana. Now, Ann Loving, another Ridgewood resident. Councilwoman Lorraine Reynolds, you have my heartfelt gratitude for four and a half years of stellar service on our Village Council. You've been honest, pleasant, diligent about finances, attentive to details, and you never stopped smiling even when there was good reason to. Your laughter from the dais will echo through the courtroom for years to come, even though laughing has been harshly criticized by one of your colleagues. Enjoy your much deserved free time now, but I do hope you'll reclaim your seat here on the unelected citizen's side, maybe in the springtime. This is a little something from Tony and me for you, if I may approach the dais.
By all means. Thank you, Ann.
Good evening. Sarab Dhani, 390 Bedford Road, Ridgewood. I'm here to thank Lorraine, Councilwoman Lorraine Reynolds, for multiple things, but I will highlight three things. One is your volunteering. Since I moved to Ridgewood, I've seen you volunteering for various acts or various causes in the town, in our village. The second is your leadership. You've demonstrated leadership at every difficult junction, so thank you for that. And lastly, your independence on this dais. You're the only one who has demonstrated independence in a long time, so thank you from bottom of my heart for all the three things and multiple things. So I hope you'll enjoy your retirement from this council, and as I said, maybe we'll see you on the other side. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Sarab. And I just want to point out, we no longer need to state our address, just whether we are Ridgewood residents or not. That's our custom going forward.
Hi, Bill McHannliss. Parts unknown, I guess. I did not realize this was the Lorraine Good Night Party. I came unprepared, but she already knows. I adore her.
It's not.
I'm sorry. You have to just say if you're a Ridgewood resident or not.
Oh, I am a Ridgewood resident, but...
I knew that, but...
Okay, fair enough. Fair enough. I'll adhere to all rules and regulations as they are. Lorraine, sorry to see you leave. You have been a bright, sunshiny light and always a pleasure to deal with, so thank you very much. Enjoy your evenings back. Happy to give you some TV recommendations if you need them. I want to talk a little bit about The View and what's been going on at The View since June. In June, some residents asked that trees be topped and items be removed. Totally makes sense to me. Folks below said, hey, where'd our buffer go? Totally makes sense to me. Recently, the village finished a $39,000 project. I believe that was the cost of the project to do the plantings that are there now. The View belongs to all of us, and I'm concerned with where we are with The View today. Several saplings have been planted. I believe they're red bud trees. These trees grow to 20 to 30 feet, and they're planted against the wall. As they stand now, their tops are over the wall. Also along the wall area are basically conifers that grow to 60 feet. There's also some grasses that have been planted that are clearly part of a buffer extension. Well deserved for the folks down below who don't need all of us peering down at them. It's the crown jewel of Ridgewood easily, and I feel that we need a little more... It's the crown jewel of Ridgewood, easily, and I feel that we need a little more robust discussion about what's going to happen with those plantings, how they'll be maintained, and what the plan is for these fast-growing, large trees that will now block the view. It's unclear to me by any communications since June, and I appreciate the replies, of how that will occur, how it came together, and whose input was taken. Again, the view belongs to all of us. It's a crown jewel. I would love to have been a part of those conversations. I tried to engage. I couldn't get in all well. But now, the trees are there. Let's figure this out so that we can keep the view for everyone. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Hi, Hyunji Kwak, Ridgewood resident. It's a bittersweet recognition for me. Happy for you, esteemed councilmember Ms. Reynolds, as you complete an admirable tenure on the dais. And sad for us in the village, who will miss you and your voice and your laughter and your detail-oriented, fact-based approach to make important decisions for all of us. Thank you for all that you have done for each and every one of us in the community, and you will be so, so missed on the dais. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hyunji.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Boyd A. Loving, Ridgewood resident. I too am here to thank Lorraine Reynolds for her service for the past four and a half years, and we do know about that extra half a year, Lorraine, and we do understand why you're leaving. I get text messages and phone calls all the time. Consider you the voice of reason on the council. I'm very sorry to see you go, but wishing you well in your retirement, wishing you more time with the family. I know about the other house that you have now that you probably like to be spending some more time with, so we certainly understand why you're going, but we're going to miss you nevertheless. So thank you for your service. And Christina Millian was unable to make it tonight and asked me to read some comments on her behalf. Thank you, Lorraine Reynolds, for your years of bold and thoughtful leadership in Ridgewood. Your unwavering dedication to prioritizing the need of all residents, paired with your fair and balanced perspective, has earned the admiration and gratitude of so many in our community. Your ability to lead with both care and conviction sets a standard for what true leadership should be, ensuring that every voice is valued and considered. Ridgewood has been fortunate to have a leader like you. Thank you for making a lasting impact.
Thank you, Boyd.
Good evening. Michael Ngo, Ridgewood resident. First, I wanted to thank Lorraine. She's done a remarkable job all over these years. I did want to talk about finance a little bit. I guess, maybe it was in the summertime, I received this really nice color brochure, and it said something like the debt service for the town was like $7 or $8 million a year. And I said, okay, that sounds like a reasonable number. But then when Mr. Rooney was here, he said something like the village of Ridgewood has a deficit of something like $70 or $80 million. And I said, that doesn't make any sense to me because that would mean we're paying like 10% interest on the money. So I'm just wondering if anyone knows why there's that discrepancy? If the amount of debt service is $7 or $8 million a year, it seems like the amount that we owe would be over $200 million. And I'm not sure if they're including the water department, or they're excluding it when Mr. Rooney was giving his numbers, but I'm just wondering if anyone knows the answer to that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Michael.
Kathy Ngo, Ridgewood resident. I'm here to thank Lorraine also, and I have to say ditto to whatever anybody else said. I'm not a speaker, so I thank them for their words, but you've been terrific. Your integrity, how you listen to the public, and all of the time over the years, not only here on the council, but other things that you've done for the village, and I greatly, greatly appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. And now we'll go to our hybrid access contributors. Ellie, you're up.
Hi, Ellie Groover, Ridgewood. Most of the people have said what I was going to say, so I'll try to make it quick. Lorraine, I am going to miss you. We are calling to say thank you. We're so sad that we won't see you anymore on the dais. I don't have to remind everyone that she's the only one who supported the residents of Sheddler. You tried to remove historic designation, see research, and proved that the historian you hired was totally unqualified, and yet you ignored this, and as a result, we spent tens of thousands of dollars we did not have to. Lorraine maintained her equilibrium and humor. Even though she was constantly marginalized by most of you, she worked so hard with the citizens' safety committee, listening to each concern. She made sure our downtown looked beautiful with her work on Project Pride. And, as someone else said, she was the only member questioned the strange accounting system of our CFO. We are poorer now that she did not run for reelection. I have...Lorraine has been like the Lorax, trying to protect the trees in our town, especially the trees in Sheddler. Lorraine has epitomized open and responsible government, and this void will not be filled. She will be terribly missed by all of us, and I thank her for the years of hard work, late nights, listening to everybody, using her brain to try to figure things out. So thank you, thank you, Lorraine, from Marty and I. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellie. Cynthia, you're up. You're on mute still, Cynthia.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can now.
Okay. Sorry I couldn't be there in person, but I did want to thank Lorraine from the bottom of my heart. I wanted to let you know...
I just need you to identify yourself.
Oh, Cynthia O'Keefe, Ridgewood resident. So, you know, I just want to echo some of the sentiments that pretty much everyone else has expressed. There aren't enough great things we could say about your leadership, your compassion, your empathy, as Ellie mentioned, for the Sheddler neighbors, who oftentimes didn't feel that, you know, that we had a champion in our corner except for you, and you've always been in our corner. I think one of the first times I ever spoke publicly, I asked for the council to dig deep and to find compassion and empathy for our plight and what was being asked of us to give up and give in. You know, we're still fighting that battle, and we're never going to stop. But I did want to let Lorraine know, and everybody in Ridgewood should really know, that, you know, you are the utmost professional, and when I think about your leadership abilities, I think of just a high level of morality and scruples. And I know it's not an easy job, and to give up so much of yourself and your life, you know, for all of us to benefit is really, you know, something that is awe-inspiring. It's not something that all of us can do, as we have so many challenges in our daily lives. But, you know, you've done that with compassion, with grace, with humor. And one of the things that I admired the most was, you know, that you really were never afraid to kick the tires and ask the critical questions that many of us were thinking, but obviously we're not sitting up on the dais to be able to, you know, to ask. When, you know, numbers were presented that just didn't seem right, you know, you asked questions about other ways to find, you know, creative solutioning. And I think that, you know, going forward for everybody, that's what we really need to do as a community. You know, I'm tired of feeling, you know, that there's an us and a them, and it's still very prevalent today in Ridgewood, especially where Sheddler is concerned. If we continue to march forward in this direction, you know, it's just not going to bode well. We are not Ridgewood United, and we need to have that feeling that we are Ridgewood United. And I think Lorraine led with the kind of compassion that was needed and the kind of empathy for all of us because we're all human beings. You know, we're not expendable, and we, you know, do not want to be marginalized. And I feel like, unfortunately, that's, you know, kind of what happened throughout this process. But I do want to thank you. I had so much fun working with you on Project Pride and the plantings, and as Nancy said, you held the bar high. And I was always a little nervous that, you know, I might have made a mistake along the way, but I knew that you were going to come and check our work, and, you know, we always got a thumbs up, and we had a lot of fun. So for that, I thank you so much, and it's been such a pleasure to get to know you, and I hope I see you at meetings going forward on the other side of the dais. Thank you and be well.
Thank you, Cynthia. Susan, you're up.
Hello, Susan Ruane. I'm a Ridgewood resident. Like everyone else, I'm echoing a big thank you to Lorraine for all her work and her grace doing her work, her dignity, as well as her humor. Thank you for listening to me regarding the footbridge. Thank you for meeting me for the footbridge. You know, I attended several of your committees. You're always gracious when I came, so thank you as well. And I know you'll still be involved in Ridgewood, but on the other side with us. So thank you again for all your work. Enjoy.
Thank you, Susan.
Enjoy your retirement.
Thank you, Susan. And with that, I will close public comment, and we will move on to our manager's report. Oh, wait, does anyone want to respond to any of the comments made at this evening's meeting?
Just to Mr. Ngo. Mr. Ngo, I think the statements that were made by the chief financial officer at a previous meeting, we budget in our capital budget, non-water, non-Ridgewood water projects, to be somewhere between $7.5 and $8 million a year. So that's our capital budget on an annual basis, and that's about the amount of debt service that falls off depending on the year. So that's how we try to keep our debt service balanced. I don't have the numbers for the breakdown of our general capital, Ridgewood Water, and the parking utility, but I can certainly provide that information to you if you'd like. You're welcome.
And I know I myself, and I know many of the members of the council want to say nice things about Lorraine, but we know that she is going to be at the reorganization meeting.
It's not done yet. Right, one more, one more.
I didn't realize. No, I mean, I'll be there. I didn't realize people were going to say goodbye to me.
Yeah, no, and so we've...I believe that we have collectively decided that we are going to hold our comments until that evening, so...but does anybody else have anything they'd like to say tonight? Nope, all good. Then we will move on to our manager's report. Keith?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to publicly join the council in thanking Jack Tancos, who has served 30 years at Central Dispatch, servicing not only the village of Ridgewood, but the borough of Glen Rock and all the other aforementioned municipalities that Central now services. I have had the opportunity to serve on the management committee at Central Dispatch since I joined the village, and I have to tell you that he, along with Director Palmeroy and Eric over there, the leadership team, is second to none. We are constantly going out and trying to recruit new municipalities, new emergency dispatch organizations to join Central Dispatch, and Jack has been on the forefront of that and a lot of the communication improvements that have not only happened at Central, but also in both the village and in the borough of Glen Rock. So I just want to congratulate him on completing 30 years and wish him well. Lorraine, I will hold my comments until the reorg meeting as well, but I want to just call the residents of Ridgewood's attention to the memorandum that my office issued on Monday. It's available on the village website, and there's a link on our social media pages. I tried to, not only for the council, but also for all the residents here in the village, to summarize some of the work that we've done over the last 18 months at a year-end memo. And if you look at the body of work that this council, through their leadership and our department directors and all of our employees here in the village, have assembled, the body of work and the accomplishments that we've made have been significant. So I would like to encourage everyone to review that. Without question, there is more work to do. We have an aggressive agenda heading into 2025, and I look forward to working with everyone to accomplish those goals. I do want to just mention that I have been in constant communication with Chief Lyons in addition to having two conversations earlier this week with the governor's office relative to the concerns about the drone activity that has occurred all throughout New Jersey. I can tell you that I am equally as frustrated as the public and many of the elected officials are in the lack of information that is being shared by both the state and federal government. While the chief has been assured by the Bergen County Prosecutor's Office and through other law enforcement agencies that there is no threat to the public, it is certainly disconcerting that this information is not being shared with government officials or with the general public, but I can promise you that Chief Lyons and his team at the Ridgewood Police Department are continuing to monitor the situation. Also pleased to report that the Haws Field renovation is substantially complete. I want to thank Matt Andrula in our Parks Division and the contractor for the work they've been doing over there. All the sod has been laid. I know that the field will be closed, and they are erecting snow fencing with appropriate signage to keep folks off so that the sod takes and we're ready for the spring season. Mr...sorry. Mr. McInnis brought up the view. We've been in communication with him. The new plantings, as he mentioned, have been complete up there as well. I did talk to Matt Andrula from our Parks Division. We are going to be aggressively pruning those trees on a semi-annual basis to ensure that we don't lose the view that the gentleman spoke of. But I do believe that this project was long overdue. We had residents from both Crest Road and Hill Crest Road that met with the mayor, myself, some of the other members of the council who expressed concerns on both sides of the view, and I do think that this is going to establish a better buffer zone to protect the residents down below, and we will stay on top of making sure that the obstructions don't impede, or that there's no obstructions that impede the view moving forward. The lighting project for a vets field, we held a pre-construction meeting this week. We anticipate that the vendor is going to be able to mobilize the beginning of January. Tentatively, January 6th is the delivery dates for the materials for the lighting project. I know the mayor is working diligently with my office and with the finance office to try to solicit some additional financial aid to cover the girls' softball field, so we're working on that. We did receive a $103,000 grant from Bergen County. It was approved by the commissioners. So with that additional funding, we will be able to move forward with the footings on the girls' softball field. Nancy Beigoss and I met on that today, and we're hopeful by mid-January we'll be able to complete that entire project. Also, update on the town garage. We've been in touch with the contractor who will be doing the demolition work at that location. They have requested all of the necessary markouts, and we anticipate by the end of the week they will have submitted permits for demolition to the building department, which we've asked Mr. Molino to expedite. So we're working through that as well. And finally, I just want to bring to the council's attention and to the public's attention that Chief Judge and Director Kleiman from the fire department and OEM respectfully have been working with Valley Hospital to utilize the Douglas Place location for OEM to stage a paramedic unit moving forward. With the relocation of Valley Hospital to Paramus, we have a further distance for paramedics to get to emergency calls here in Ridgewood. So Jeremy and John have been working with Valley to stage a paramedic unit here in the village on Douglas Place, and that'll be from Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. While this will not guarantee a paramedic for every 911 event, it will improve their ability since dispatch is based on the closest available unit and proximity. So I will be circulating to the council a license agreement between the village and Valley Hospital for you to consider in early January so that we can get this off the ground in early 2025. Just a few announcements. Santa Claus will be at Van Ness Square at Santa's House this Saturday, December 14th, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We encourage everyone to bring the family for pictures with Santa. The Ridgewood PBA Local 20 presents Merry Grinchmas, their annual toy drive, also to be held this Saturday, December 14th. Please bring an unwrapped toy to any of our elementary schools. There'll be pickup at Haws at 12:00 p.m., Somerville at 12:30, Glen at 1:00, Travell at 1:30, Willard at 2:00, Ridge at 2:30, Orchard at 3:00, and the village Christmas tree at the corner of East... of East Ridgewood Avenue and Broad Street at 3:30. The Ridgewood FMBAA, Local 47, presents Santa Claus, who's coming to town on our fire truck on Friday, December 20th. They will be visiting Glen School at 4:00. At 4:30, he'll be at Travell, 5:00 at Somerville, 5:30 Haws at 6:30, Orchard at 7:00, and Ridge School at 7:30 p.m. Please join Santa for a 15-minute visit at each of our elementary schools. Village of Ridgewood and all village offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 24th, and Wednesday, December 25th, for the Christmas holiday. There will be garbage and recycling pickup on Tuesday, December 24th, and the recycling center will be open from 8:00 to 3:00 on that day. The 12th Annual menorah lighting will be held at Van Ness Square on December 29th. That's a Sunday from 5:30 to 7:30. Encourage everyone to come out and support the menorah lighting this year. And finally, village council upcoming meetings, January 6th will be our reorganization meeting. January 8th will be the first work session, and January 22nd will be the public meeting, all starting at 7:30 p.m. And that concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Keith. And now we'll go to council reports. Ev?
Great. I'll be brief, as we were only here a week ago. But first, I too want to congratulate Jack. One of the things I got to do last summer was do a tour of the dispatch that Jack provided. It was really impressive, not just the location, but the people. And Jack is really richly, richly thanked tonight, I think, by you, Paul, and by the whole council. And it's really great to be able to recognize him, and I wish him another 30 years. Tree lighting was fantastic. Keith, I want to congratulate the entire village. I thought we did a really nice job, Parks Recs, police, everyone. It was packed. We had great, great weather, really, really wonderful event, really well done by the village. Historical Preservation Committee met this past Monday. As I always say, I'm just always amazed at the quality of our volunteers for that committee. Only in Ridgewood, you get architects and interior designers and real estate professionals all willing to volunteer their time on a really important committee. Finally, this is our last meeting of the year. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy New Year, have a great end of the year, whatever you celebrate, and I look forward to seeing everyone on January 6th.
Thanks, Evan. Siobhan?
Sure. So I too want to thank everybody who made Downtown for the Holidays happen. Clearly, the tree was awesome. And for those of you who weren't in attendance, it was extra special because Louis Francis and his family donated the tree, and he went to West Point, served in the U.S. Army, and dedicated it in honor of all those who are serving and won't be home for Christmas. So not only is it a beautiful tree, but the message is a reminder that many, many, many people are supporting us in places that aren't at home, and it won't be the happiest Christmas for them. So when you see that tree, I'm very thankful to the people who are serving us as a country and to the Francises. And also, fun fact about the tree is it's two feet shorter than the tree in Rockefeller Center.
I want to recount on that, by the way.
It's prettier, though. It might be shorter, but it's prettier. Additionally, in Van Ness Square, as the Parks Rep, I want to thank Nancy and the fire department. The smores were wildly successful. If not, there was like a run on smores. I did not get one, but 1,500 smores were given out in 40 minutes. And I was quite jealous. They looked delicious. And I want to, you know, these things happen because our recreation program promotes recreation and our parks, but each of the fire pits, for the lawyers amongst us, had a fully dressed fireman. And it was, just took a lot of effort to make 1,500 kids very happy with the smores. So thank you to everybody who made everything happen, including Signal, Fire, Police, and anybody who I left out. It's just on the sake of time. I also want to thank, in terms of the holidays, on Monday, we had our sensory-friendly tree lighting. As I've mentioned before, if you're a member of a family with a special needs child who has processing issues, attending an event like the tree lighting can be overwhelming. And two years ago, through Access, we started an inclusionary tree lighting where it's quiet, quiet counting, no screaming, no yelling, and we keep the tree dark and light it for them. This year, I want to give an extra big thank out, shout out, thank, thank you to our fire department and our police who attend everything. But they gave the kids backpacks, which they loved, and inside the backpack was, you know, kids, kids love things and go to an event. Not only the kids who have the special need, but the sibling. It was wonderful. So I want to thank our fire department, our police department, our downtown. And this year, an added benefit was, in addition to the special needs community, people who felt it was too cold Friday night showed up. Thank you to Omid at Parisa East. In addition to being wonderful for our special needs community, the restaurant was full on a Monday night, which is great for business. And I want to thank him and everyone in the staff, and of course, Signal, who waited outside for the unofficial countdown and lit the tree. Additionally, I want to thank the Guild, where I went to Parisa. I've been there every night this week for dinner. Highly recommend it. Had their holiday party last night, and Deputy Mayor Perrin and I were lucky enough to attend. I want to thank the Guild for all that they do, and including us in their celebration. When you look at things downtown that make it sparkle and more vibrant and more artsy and filled with music, we're very grateful to Tony and the Guild and the good work, you know, Project Pride. They do, they do a lot. So thank you to them. And then I just want to mention this, because the View is a park, and we've, you know, I'm happy that people understand that the trees were there. But with it becoming the shortest day of the year and us promoting parks, it's the perfect time of year to go watch a Ridgewood sunrise, because the best place to watch it is from the View, and sunrise is actually going to be the latest it's ever going to be. So if you're like not into getting up at 5:30 with my daughter's Girl Scout troop, like I did once, you could get up at like 6:45, go up to the View and experience like a very cool park experience from the View. And lastly, I want to wish everyone, everywhere, a happy everything to everyone, whatever you're celebrating, and we'll see you next year, where I'm going to talk a lot about Lorraine and definitely about the cookies.
Thanks, Siobhan. And speaking of, what was your name again? Lorraine.
Thank you. I just want to say, next week is our last Citizen Safety Advisory Committee meeting of the year, next Thursday, 7:30 in the Garden Room. It'll be my last meeting of my council career. And that's it on committee meetings, and I just want to thank everybody for showing up tonight, saying a kind word, calling in on the phone. I'm very overwhelmed. I, it was totally unexpected. I will be here January 6th to say my final goodbye. I'll have a little speech. I don't know what I'm going to say yet, but it'll be my last hurrah, and I really appreciate from the bottom of my heart that I felt the love and appreciation tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Lorraine. Pam?
I too want to thank the Guild for what they do all year long, but last night's dinner at Parisa East was really very special, getting to talk to people I know and people I don't, didn't know. Green Ridgewood met last week, and that's our environmental advisory committee, in case you didn't know. And we discussed the need for measuring the village's energy usage, that is, electricity usage, gas usage, and the floodwaters as they come. And, can't even read my own writing. We also discussed the food scraps composting and collection program, and where do we go from here. We appreciate Sean Hamlin's efforts there. He's the director of recycling and sanitation. There's been some outreach to Bergen County to try to help, get them to help with our flooding situation. And we also had an update from the Ridgewood High School students regarding a meadow that they would like to add on high school property. Downtown for the Holidays was so full of light, and I just think it's so necessary in this month of short days. The, the trucks, I think people must have spent a lot of time in the departments making the trucks as beautiful as they were. So thank you to the village and to the Chamber of Commerce, of course, for everything they've done in planning this. Joan Groom was everywhere at once. And I think it's what our residents needed. I also wanted to say that there are vacancies on at least these boards and committees that I know about. The Planning Board, the Zoning Board of Adjustment, Open Space Committee, Green Ridgewood, the Green Team, and CBDAC, the Central Business District Advisory Committee. And our clerk has extended the time to apply to December 30th, right? And the form is very simple. You can get it on, off the website. It's just if you go to the clerks, to forms.
If you go to departments, it's under village clerk.
Yeah. And you learn a lot about the village. It's very gratifying to volunteer on these committees. So I hope that people will consider that. I too want to thank, I forgot to say, Commander Francis for donating the tree. I don't think I remember a tree from Ridgewood ever being our, our Christmas tree.
We have. Yes, we have.
Okay, okay. I just didn't remember. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Pam. There's so many things that everybody said tonight, but I do want to echo Siobhan's comments about our service members who are protecting us all around the world, and the fact that Commander Francis and his wife, Yvonne, donated this tree really raises the profile. Take a moment when you're all at home with your families to just stop and be thankful for all of these people who are not home with their families so that we can be. And with that, we will move on to our regular agenda.
Can I just ask a question?
By all means.
Heather, do we have, we, I know we have openings for Citizen Safety as well as Project Pride, so if people go to the website, they'll see that there are openings for that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
And you've applied for Project Pride, correct?
I have not.
I merit us.
And I'm going to save Lorraine, and we're going to move on, and we'll go to our public hearings. I move the clerk read ordinance 4023 by title on second reading, and that the public hearing thereon be opened.
Second.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
Vagianos?
Yes. Will the clerk please read the title of ordinance 4023?
A bond ordinance providing for the Ridgewood Water-led service line replacement program in the Ridgewood Water System Service Area in and by the village of Ridgewood in the county of Bergen, New Jersey, appropriating $12,300,000 therefor, and authorizing the issuance of $12,300,000 bonds or notes of the village to finance the costs thereof.
The public hearing is now open. Seeing no one, I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
Vagianos?
Yes.
I move that ordinance 4023 be adopted on the second reading and final publication as required by law.
I second the motion.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
And Vagianos?
Yes. I move the clerk read ordinance 4024 by title on second reading, and that the public hearing thereon be opened.
Second.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
Vagianos?
Yes. Will the clerk please read the title of ordinance 4024?
A bond ordinance providing for the property owner-led service line replacement program in the Ridgewood Water System Service Area in and by the village of Ridgewood in the county of Bergen, New Jersey, appropriating $6,500,000 therefor, and authorizing the issuance of $6,500,000 bonds or notes of the village to finance the costs thereof.
The public hearing is now open. Seeing no one, I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
And Vagianos?
Yes.
I move that ordinance 4024 be adopted on the second reading and final publication as required by law.
I second the motion.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
And Vagianos?
Yes.
The following resolutions, number 24-375 through 24-379, will be adopted by a consent agenda with one vote by the village council. They will be read by title only. Award contract, construction of raw water mains to Ames and Warden dyke PFOS treatment facilities. Award additional amount of sole source contract, furnished corrosion inhibitor. Authorized change order, professional services for PFOS treatment plant at Ravine well site. Authorized withdrawal from Tyco International Class Action Settlement. Authorized withdrawal from BASF Class Action Settlement. May I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay. Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
And Vagianos?
Yes. I move the clerk read ordinance 4025 by title on second reading, and that the public hearing thereon be opened.
Second.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
And Vagianos?
Yes. Will the clerk please read the title of ordinance 4025?
An ordinance to amend chapter 190, land use and development of the code of the village of Ridgewood at section 190-83, stormwater management and flood protection.
The public hearing is now open. Seeing no one, I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
And Vagianos?
Yes.
I move that ordinance 4025 be adopted on second reading and final publication as required by law.
I second the motion.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
And Vagianos?
Yes. And I just want to take a moment. This ordinance, you know, we have, as everyone knows, we have serious flooding issues in the village. This is a big step that will have some effect on that flooding ultimately, and this was pushed very hard and piloted by Pam Perrin, and we are all, as a village, grateful for that. And so we move on. I move the clerk read ordinance 4026 by title on second reading, and that the public hearing thereon be opened.
Second.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
And Vagianos?
Yes. Will the clerk please read the title of ordinance 4026?
An ordinance to amend chapter 145 of the code of the village of Ridgewood fees at section 145-4, departmental fees.
The public hearing is now open.
May I just say how important it is, the services that our departments provide, the building department, in terms of inspecting, making sure that plumbing is done properly, that electric is done properly, and the fire department, that we are protected. And these fees are important to keep that program, those programs going.
Agreed. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
And Vagianos?
Yes.
I move that ordinance 4026 be adopted on the second reading and final publication as required by law.
I second the motion.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
And Vagianos?
Yes. I move the clerk read ordinance 4027 by title on second reading, and that the public hearing thereon be opened.
Second.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
And Vagianos?
Yes. Will the clerk please read the title of ordinance 4027?
An ordinance to amend chapter 190 of the code of the village of Ridgewood, land use and development pertaining to residential driveway standards.
The public hearing is now open.
I'd like to say that, oh, go, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Boyd A. Loving, Ridgewood resident. I believe there was some discussion at a previous work session regarding this ordinance or proposed ordinance with respect to the use of certain driveway blocks. Where does that stand? Are you going to be passing this ordinance without that provision that these driveway blocks have to be used? Again, I know there was some discussion about, about it, but I, there's been no comment made now with the public hearing being open as to where the council stands with respect to their plans of either killing this and going to a new ordinance when the new council comes in to play in January, or passing this ordinance as is now, and then revising a new ordinance at a later date. I would appreciate your commenting on it tonight. Thank you very much.
That is what I was going to bring up. This came to us at the Planning Board and at village council because the Zoning Board of Adjustment wanted clarification so that they could rule quickly on applications before it when a circular driveway is, is requested. At Green Ridgewood and, and before the Planning Board, the idea of requiring permeable surfacing on circular driveways because they are so big, because in general, they create so much more impervious surfacing and aggravating our stormwater situation. This is a real concern. This is a real concern. About forty percent of our village is impervious. So when it rains, the water has no place to go. Water should naturally infiltrate into the ground, but because of asphalt, sidewalks, roadways, it can't. And that is important. However, we want, at, at planning board, we wanted to treat all driveway applications equitably. And the issue is bigger than just circular driveways. With this ordinance, we can answer the zoning board of adjustments' request to clarify and help them. But we need to also look at the bigger picture going forward. Let's assess what surfacing is out there that is really pervious or permeable? And what is the difference in those terms? And what's porous? And how do you maintain these things? We do have a pilot project that we started, I don't know, eighteen, twenty-four months ago on some sidewalk surfacing material. And in the coming months, we will assess how successful it's been. Does it help our sidewalk trees? That sort of thing. We need to, to explore this further, define our terms, know what we are asking applicants to do in order to look at the bigger picture and see where we should go with, with this kind of surfacing. And we can revisit in a bigger way what kind of driveway material we should be asking people to use. But for today, my vote would be to approve this.
I just have a question, Pam. I just want to make sure that the square footage of a circular driveway, if people want it, is part of the impervious coverage that you're allowed to have on the whole lot. So if somebody wanted to put in a circular driveway and they're over that limit, then they would have to go for an ordinance. I mean, a variance, sorry.
Right. And the stormwater ordinance that we just passed is going to address that in terms of the square footage and whatever mitigation might need to be done.
Anyone else?
I mean, Pam and I had a sidebar conversation. I think there's good driveway structural zoning in here that we get the benefits if we pass it now for the next couple of months in planning. And the larger environmental questions of driveways in general should be answered more holistically by planning and zoning. So that's why I, I heard David Rafkin, and I appreciate the feedback. I think we just need to reap the immediate benefits of the ordinance as introduced regarding driveways and deal with the surface issue in a secondary, larger effort of defining, lawyerly defining definitions and that kind of stuff. That's why I'm going to be voting yes.
And Susan, I see on hybrid access, you have your hand raised.
Yeah. Hi, yes, I was listening to the conversation. And I do agree that, oh, I'm sorry, Susan Ruane, a Ridgewood resident. I do agree that, I believe that they should be talking about more environmentally friendly surfaces for circular driveways versus just having, just giving a blanket approval for any circular driveway. And also, this is just something about maybe an incentive for people to get a tax rebate just for like one year if they use more environmentally friendly circular driveway material versus just none. But that was pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Anyone else? Seeing no one, I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
And Vagianos?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. I move that ordinance 4027 be adopted on the second reading and final publication required by law.
Second.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
Vagianos?
Yes.
The following resolutions, number 24-380 through 24-410, will be adopted by Consent Agenda Resolution 24-411 will be considered separately and read in full. All of the items on the consent agenda will be read by title only. Approve 2025 cash, village cash management plan. Designate official newspapers for 2025. Approve 2025 annual meeting statement. Award contract: Preparation of 2025 village council meeting minutes. Award contract: Animal control and water fowl management. Award contract: Payment of parking transactions using mobile technology and other related services. Award contract under county contract: Janitorial cleaning services. Award contract under state contract: Computer networking equipment. Award contract under Sourceball contract: Brush bandit chipper for the Parks Department. Award professional services contract: Elevator subcode inspection inspector. Award professional services contract: Physician for child health clinics. Award professional services contract: Licensed site remediation professional remedial action permit reporting requirements and additional environmental services Hudson Street Garage. Authorized shared services agreement: 2025 Child Health Clinic, Fairlawn and Glen Rock. Authorized shared services agreement: Cosmetology inspections with Norwood. Authorized change order: Replacement of underground fuel tanks at Chestnut Street Garage. Confirm endorsement of community development block grant application for the village of Ridgewood lining sewer pipes in designated community development block grant streets. Approve 2024 budget transfer, chapter 159, 2024 budget amendment grant from Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation, Inc. Authorized refund of tax overpayment at 516 Hillcrest Road. Declare property surplus, Office of Emergency Management. Declare property surplus IT equipment. Accept donation to Garber Square Landscape Renovation. Authorized annual service charge Ridge Crest Ridgewood Senior Citizens Housing Corporation, Inc. Resolution determining the form and other details of $27,212,000 general obligation bonds, series 2025, consisting of $15,222,000 general improvement bonds, $11,572,000 water utility bonds, and $418,000 parking utility bonds of the village of Ridgewood in the county of Bergen, New Jersey and providing for their sale. Resolution providing for the combination of certain issues of general improvement bonds of the village of Ridgewood and the county of Bergen, New Jersey into a single issue of bonds aggregating $15,222,000 in principal amount. Resolution providing for the combination of certain issues of parking utility bonds of the village of Ridgewood in the county of Bergen, New Jersey into a single issue of bonds aggregating $418,000 in principal amount. Authorized placement of Narcan and AED boxes in the village of Ridgewood. Authorized execution for various documentation, replacement of underground fuel storage tanks and fuel system, Fleet Services Division. Amend membership on Shade Tree Commission. Appoint member to planning board. Authorized shared services agreement Municipal Court Administrator and Deputy Municipal Court Administrator Services. May I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes.
And Vagianos?
Yes.
All right, let me just get to the last resolution, which is 24-411. Whereas the village of Ridgewood has a lease agreement with Health Barn USA, Inc., the tenant for the rental of the gatehouse at Haber Nickel Park, 1057 Hillcrest Road, Ridgewood, New Jersey. Whereas the tenant and the village of Ridgewood have agreed to amendments to the current lease. Whereas the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, Green Acres, has approved the amendments to the current lease with minor additions. Now therefore be it resolved that the lease amendments agreed to by the tenant and the village of Ridgewood and approved by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, Green Acres, be and are hereby approved to be included in the current lease. And be it further resolved that the mayor and village clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute all paperwork required to amend the current lease with the approved amendments. May I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Mayor, through you, I just want to clarify that both the shared services agreement with Glen Rock for the municipal court and the Health Barn amendments were discussed in executive session last week in closed session. And we just received back the comments from the DEP, which were extremely minor and updated today. So that's why they were added to the agenda. But they were previously discussed by the council in closed session.
Thank you, Keith.
Okay. Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
No.
Whites?
Yes.
Winograd?
Yes, I, I just want to say thank you to the Health Barn for their continued partnership and all the good work that they do there. And thank you to Keith and the DEP and Green Acres and everybody who sees this as a wonderful continued fit for Ridgewood.
And Vagianos?
Yes. And so we will return to comments from the public.
Good evening again, Ann Loving, Ridgewood. I would like to say that this is really Councilwoman Reynolds' last business meeting. Yes, she will be here for the reorg, but I think that's why so many people wanted to, to, you know, heap praise on her tonight. And of course, we'll all be here on the sixth as well. One Ridgewood resident called in and was unable or didn't get connected somehow, and so she has asked me to read what she wanted to say. Marsha Ringel, Ridgewood resident. I'm calling to thank Lorraine Reynolds for your valued four and a half years on the council, as well as your many previous efforts as a dedicated citizen. Thank you for agreeing to run, for winning, and for serving your fellow residents with zeal and good humor. Always good humor, even when others might have yelled or cried. It's not easy to swim against the tide, as you often had to, representing your constituents fairly and insisting on listening to what everyone had to say. We will miss you on the dais very much. Thanks, Lorraine. Marsha.
Thanks, Ann.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Boyd Loving, a Ridgewood resident, again. With respect to one of the resolutions that was passed tonight, I've got concerns about 24-381, which is about newspapers. As you all probably know, the Star Ledger is ceased print production sometime in February of 2025, I believe. And the Jersey Journal is closing as a result of the Star Ledger closing their printing plant. There is another weekly that is also going out as the result of the Star Ledger closing its printing plant. So it would seem that newspapers are having a tough time in New Jersey. And I don't think I've ever heard this council discuss what the plan will be in the event there is no longer a Bergen Record or a Ridgewood News to advertise your legal notices. I understand that there was a push at one time from some municipalities to do away with the need to have placed legal ads in newspapers at all and just do it on their website. So I guess that's what we will be forced to do at some point in time. But I would suggest that perhaps this be an item for discussion at an upcoming council work session, whether you're going to get on board with those who are trying to get out of having to publish legal notices in newspapers? And what the plan is in the event that Gannett decides that they are no longer going to be publishing an edition of the record, print edition of the record? And what's going to happen to the Ridgewood News, which seems to be going, well, I won't say it, but it's not what it used to be. Just let me put it that way. Okay, so just some thought for the council in, in the future. The other thing I'd like to say is just an observation, and a very large observation at that, when I total up the number of change orders and ads on tonight's agenda, it's That's, wow. $291,000 in change orders and ads. I'm shocked that we don't have sharp enough pencils to get it right in the first place, that we have come back and asked for another $291,000 in total. Some of that for Ridgewood Water. It looks like about $144,000 of that for an ad to something else. So just don't know why we can't get it right in the first place that we're coming back and asking again. Thank you.
Thank you, Boyd. Anyone else from the public? No, let's go to our hybrid access. Susan, you're up.
Susan Ruane, a Ridgewood resident. I was going to ask, what is happening with the house on East Side River Road that was declared abandoned? I pass it by now, and now I observe it and realize it's still overgrown and look still untamed. But I just don't know since the last, since the first meeting, what has happened to it and what's going to happen and stuff. And that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Anyone else? Seeing no one, I'm going to close public comment. And we will, does anyone have any response to any of the questions or comments raised?
Mayor, just two observations. One, or both, to Mr. Loving. One, with regard to the resolution designating the 2025 official newspapers, we are simply abiding by current statute, which without question is antiquated and outdated. I could tell you that I served as the president of the New Jersey Municipal Clerks Association in 2015 and 2016, and we were talking to the state legislature then about needing to change the law as to how information and publications that municipalities need to put out to the public are delivered. Because even back then, newspaper circulation was dwindling significantly. So I would strongly suggest to you that you take some of those concerns to the state legislators and talk to them about the need to change the legislation so that municipalities are adequately, in today's age, being able to communicate public notices out to the public accordingly. Secondly, with regard to the change orders, you know, I'll respectfully disagree with you on especially the 100 and, I think it's 144,000, on the change order for the project at the municipal garage. That's where we're in the process of removing the aged oil tanks at that location. There was no way to predict what was underground during the bidding process for that specific project. When you're removing underground storage tanks, and I anticipate that we'll have the same thing on Walnut Street, the contractor, when they begin excavation, finds what they find. And then you have to deal with the contingencies of being able to remediate whatever is found. So I will tell you that there were contingencies in this bid in case we did find contaminated soil or any seepage from the existing soil tanks. And that's what the council acted on this evening.
And I also want to point out that some of these projects are enormous. For example, the Ravine Well PFOS facility. And so while that number is extraordinarily large, 291,000, some of these things are a very small percentage of the overall size of the project.
Should also be noted that the removal of those storage tanks down on Chestnut Street at the, at the DPW garage is another lingering project. The capital for that project was authorized years ago, and we're just getting to that project now. And again, you, you can't predict what you're going to find underground until you dig underground.
I also thought that Rich Calby came and explained to us why Ridgewood Water had a change order.
At Ravine.
At Ravine, yeah. Because of all the watering that had to happen in October, which was Mother Nature's decision. Not, not quite Mother Nature, but with the drought, people were watering more, so they had more water product going out the door. And with regard to local newspapers, in large part, it's the municipalities' notices that are keeping that local news afloat. And my concern is that local news is so important for local governments like ours. And I, I see them struggling.
and I see them struggling, and if there's a way to keep our local newspapers alive, like subscribing, I urge that you subscribe.
Anyone else?
I have a question. I just kind of wanted to explain, I don't know if I was allowed to explain why I voted no on the Health Barn amendments, because it was something that we discussed in closed session, but now that it's voted on, is the lease going to be public knowledge? So I just, it, it wasn't because it was added late or anything like that, it was, I have an issue with one of the changes being that in previously, it would have been the council that made decisions, and now it's changed to the village manager can make the decision. No offense, Keith, but I do feel that it's very important, and I think it should be a five-member decision and not a one-person decision, and that's why I voted no.
Thanks, Lorraine. Anybody else? And with that, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, thank you.
Oh, my gosh.